Hello, I'm Keith Nichols with Marion County Funeral Home. I'm here with our manager Glenda Cochran and owners Rick and Jane Chambliss. It has always been our purpose to provide the most caring and compassionate service we can at the most reasonable prices. So we feel it imperative to offer a pre-need option that will fit the needs of the people and area we serve. So why should we pre-plan? To make sure your wishes are met, provide peace of mind for you and your family, to relieve hurried and impulsive decisions at one of the most difficult times in our lives, to also relieve a great financial burden on our family. We plan for a number of things in our lives, so let's not forget one of the most important, our final arrangements. For a limited time, we're offering your choice of a $6,495 service or a $6,995 service. We're here because we care, so give us the opportunity to sit down and answer any questions you might have regarding pre-planning and the services we provide at Marion County Funeral Home in Hamilton, 921-5777, and follow us on Facebook.
From a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint &amp; Body is here for you. Owners Kim Guin would like to say thank you for your business.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Guin to Sulligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at 205-921-6712.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you, with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand Career Tech and Health Science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
All right, this just arrived and we'll call our meeting to order. Want to welcome all of our guests tonight. We've got several folks in the room with us. We'll have a word from Marlon toward the end of the meeting. He's got a presentation he didn't get to make at our work session because we didn't get a call, did we, Mark?
Yeah, something like that. Somebody had to go put a wind in and want to have a meeting in Coleman and a couple of other things. Things happen. You can't have...
We had great excuses, so we're going to let you do it tonight. But we're serious, we want to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. We have three additional meetings after tonight. We're winding it down for this administration. So proud that we can still be here and we'll stand together at this point and we'll have a medication in our place when we get started. Come in, sir. I have a thought that we can pause just to thank you for this beautiful day and the rain that you've given us today. What a blessing. Lord, we thank you for each opportunity that we have to assemble. Thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy. Lord, we ask that you be in the midst of our meeting tonight, the utter moves, and whatever we do would be pleasing your side and helpful to our community. That's his prayer, Christ's sake. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Our first item of business tonight, item one, would be a recommendation to approve the minutes of the August 18th City Council meeting. Got a motion from Ross to approve this, and we need a second. Sherry made a second. All in favor? Thank you very much. Item two is a recommendation to approve our accounts payable bills for August 2025. Need a motion. Scott Robertson made the motion, and it is second.
I'll second.
Second by Ross. All in favor of approving our current bills?
I need to abstain on mine. I think I got one voice.
We'll allow that a extension. Item three is a recommendation to approve the candidacy of the election results minutes from the meeting that was held at 12 noon on September 2nd. That would be today, 2025, at the Hamilton City Hall, right here as a matter of fact.
I'll make that motion.
Scott Tyra made the motion to approve those minutes, and we need a second.
I'll second.
Second by Ross. All in favor of approving that set of minutes? Thank you. So the election was certified at 12 noon today, except the run. Item four is a recommendation to award engineer services contract to same associates for an estimated budget amount of $67,100 for the Grow Alabama Project. That's at our industrial park, and this would be the cost of engineering. We've got a motion from Sherry. We need a second on that. Second by eight. All those in favor of approving that? Thank you very much. Local Government Health Insurance Board will have a 4.75 increase in their health and dental insurance premiums for the upcoming fiscal year. The City of Hamilton will absorb this premium increase and not pass this on to the city's employees.
I'll make a motion.
Now, motion from Ross to absorb this cost? Got to be a second.
I'll second.
Scott Tyra second. All those in favor of this? Thank you very much. Number six is the award of the lowest debt price of $503,850 to Price Civil Services, Inc., a contractor for the Mitchell Hill Pumping Station Project. We've been waiting a long time to award this bid, and it's a good low bid, and I'd like to make this award tonight. Got a motion from Scott? Second from Sherry? All those in favor of awarding that bid? Will be able to move that water much more efficiently to the west side of Hamilton and take care of our customers on the west side as well as our rural customers. That concludes the items on the agenda, and at this point, we have a presentation from Marlon.
I thought you said we're at the end of the meeting. I'm up here in the chief's seat.
Get on the podium, Marlon.
Y'all know I'm picking at you and I'm winning the meeting, you know? I have a friend, Bobby, sitting there, "Hey, this one's doing this, this is doing that." Did y'all all get one of these?
I do.
Okay. Make sure you got it, so we can see it. So if you'll notice, there's a lot of numbers on there, but basically, I'm coming up to you today. As y'all know, the Veterans Service Office of Mary Franklin County. I'm in two counties that incorporates about 3,000 veterans. That doesn't count their spouses and dependents and all this. And not all 3,000 of these veterans are seeking benefits. But there's a lot that goes on taking care of these folks. And I'm a one-man show, by the way. I don't have a secretary and all that stuff, so I'm a pretty busy guy. What I wanted to point out to you, that list you got there, if you look back on the back page of 2021, you'll see that VA puts this out, usually they're a year behind. So in 2021, we were pumping, they were pumping in $17,258,000 a year into this county. Okay? That was the year I started with, 2021. And I'm not up here to toot the horn, okay? I'm just giving you some data. Well, since that time, in 2024, last year, we are now at $23,729,000. That says you're under millions of dollars that we had increased in this county, you know, and it affects all the cities, all the citizens here. This is what I call untouched money. There's no taxes on it. It's money given to veterans or their spouses or dependents for education. Most of it's due to disability. You know, we have a lot of veterans here that are 100% disabled. You've got 100% disabled, and you've got 100% PNT. And there's a lot of, a lot of people know there's like three different waters. Yes, you can get it through. But this is money that comes into this county and is used. Do whatever they want with it. Most of them, they live off of paid bills. We've got healthcare. I get veterans signed up. That's one of the biggest things for me is getting these, getting these veterans signed up on healthcare. Because we all know that they have to pay healthcare, how much that costs. And you're talking about people that, you're talking about some people, not a lot of them, but there are some people that, dang, as you say, ain't got pot pissing them. They live off Social Security and they live off this check they get from the VA. And if I'm able to give them free healthcare, you know, it's a godsend for them. I mean, I really don't know how some of these people make it, you know? I know a couple ladies I deal with, they draw less than $1,000 from Social Security. And if they didn't get that little $500 widow's pension check, I still don't know how to make it. So I just want you to know what? We, the Alabama Department of Veterans Fair, bring to the table and what we continue to work with to try and increase income, but mainly to make sure the veterans taken care of. And so each year, this is, I think this, if I'm correct, my, this is our fourth year doing the Alabama Veteran State Program, mostly about Hamilton. And we've been, we've been able to hold the cost pretty close. There were some things like I don't have to buy the flags that we put out, you know, like the display we have out here in front. You know, this is Suicide Prevention, Suicide Awareness Month for veterans. So each flag represents a veteran, the number is 139 that killed themselves last year, you know? The number has gone down over the past three years, but it's only gone down by a few, but it has went down. But I can use those flags for all of that, you know? We've got little ornaments we put on the table, little flags and all that. We don't have to pay for those anymore. I've already, through the years, we just collect them back and I bought some up. So we, but our biggest cost that we have is just the food. That's our biggest cost that we have, you know? And then we do the table costs. I think I'm able to do that down about 100 this year. I haven't called to see what the new cost is going to be because everything just goes up every year. And then, of course, the floors. We try to put on a top-notch program for these veterans. You know, it looks good. Bobby's been down there, speaks for us every year, does a great job. He's witnessed it, there's some folks that send here that's been to this program. So roughly, the budget runs about, give or take, but it runs about $6,6300 to put this on. But we put a top-notch program. I got people who got a little on sale just to get the table costs and that, because we put, we use real ones, you know? I don't want no papers for it. We're going to do it, let's do it, do it right. So I'm coming to y'all asking that y'all donate like you've done the past three years and thank you for what you've done for us. And I don't know exactly what y'all gave last year. I think it was 2,000 something. I don't remember.
Around 2,000.
Yeah. But, you know, we usually get 2,000 from the Maryham Commission Office. They donate 2,000. Alabama Power does 1,000. REA does, I think they did 250. And then what y'all get from, we get from y'all, we still come up short, but we figure out some way to make that up, you know? So that's actually what I'm doing is asking y'all's consideration again for this year to put this program on and to him to donate like we've done in the past years. We greatly appreciate it.
Any questions, Marlon? Appreciate the effort you made. That's not in your job description, but you do it anyway, and I appreciate that.
No, I'm just saying, I'm not here as, you see, I don't have my name tag on. I'm not here as an Alabama Department of Veterans Fair person. They don't, they don't, they want us to do this, but they don't give us the money to do it. They all that newyacian stuff, you know? But I'm here as a retired Marine veteran, asking as a veteran. And I just also, like I said, appreciate y'all letting us put the flags and the signs up out from y'all's place there. So Chad's going to, Miss Chad's getting together. We got some pictures from the kids that came down and helped us out yesterday morning. Jeremy Ruth, his two kids and two of their cousins was having to spend the night, so I said, "Get them down here, come on, we're going to put the flags up." So they had a good time. We got some pictures, I thought, so I told them, I said, "If you come down, I'll get you a picture and a paper." So I think that's what got them going, so.
Is there something you need done next meeting or tonight or first of October? When do you need money?
I, when y'all, when y'all, by mid-October, that's fine, because I'm going to start.
It'll be middle of this month we'll be again.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, we'll be in two weeks.
Because a lot of this stuff is paid for right after the week of, that's when we're getting it. So the biggest one is the, with the catering, we usually, I think we give them 1,500 or 2,000 upfront. This catering runs about $3,000 to feed about 150 people. I think I'm going to try and drop that 10 place this time, just to give a feel. But we, we did pretty good last year. We had a little bit of food left, but, you know, we had folks taking to go places, but then we dropped it on us a little bit. Normally, it runs, we plan on 150 is what we're planning on, because, you know, we got not just the veterans, you know, the people that show up to be part of it. You got the ambassadors from Bevel, because, yeah, Bevel been cutting, mopping out the cost on it, you know, we'd be in trouble. But Dr. Haygood lets us have, he doesn't, they don't charge us anything, and, you know, working with Beth Roberts over there, she does a great job of having ambassadors there, so, you know, we feed ambassadors and, you know? If people come, it's open to anybody. I mean, it's for the veterans, but I invite people to, you know, come anyway, you know? We've got huge plenty of food. We've got the Marines coming again. I mean, everybody, that's like walking stone out. So they're like, "Yeah, this is, we were putting this on here." I think they kind of, because the old guy that went out, wound up getting him 100% on his disability, you know? I told him, I said, "Yeah, this, I'm telling you, 20 years in the Marines, you've got some problems, trust me." I know personally. But they're all coming down. But we try to cut the corners, because, see, now I got the Marines, when they come down, they just stay with me, you know? Because I got that big old empty house over there, so they all come down and stay with me, you know? So when I pay the old tail bill, we feed them out there. And Bennett's that murderer thing, they'll let me there for free while they're down, so, you know? It's kind of pretty frequent, you know?
Thanks, Marlon. We'll try to get this on the very next agenda, okay?
Hey, I appreciate it.
We now have our, having a high school band director, maybe middle school too. Kevin, if you'll come on and make your presentation, same podium, which appreciate it.
Okay. This is my question. I'm Kevin Clay, I'm band director at Hamilton High School and the middle school. And it's such a pleasure to meet all of you and thank you for allowing me to come forward today to ask for your help. I don't know if I made enough coffee, so you might want to share. If you haven't heard, we're doing some really great things with our band program at Hamilton High School. When I took over last year, our band program only had about 50 kids in the program, and in one year, we managed to get it up to 71. And we're hoping over the next few years that our numbers will keep coming up. And one of the things that we use to encourage kids, of course, to be a part of our band program, our trips and different things that we do that other groups can't do. And so what I wanted to talk to you about is we've been invited to perform in Chicago for the St. Patrick's Day parade, and I'm here to ask for some financial assistance if possible. You know, we have a lot of students right now. As you know, I'm sure you're all familiar with the situation with our school and band directors. Right now, we, our, the majority of our band is seventh and eighth graders. And because the last few years, there wasn't a lot of recruiting going on like it should have been. And so we're doing everything we can to encourage kids to participate in our program. You know, we're doing everything we can to get them to be a part of it. Definitely trips are one way that we can do that. If you would look at the tour proposal, one night, our kids are going to get to see Blue Man Group, they're going to get to see, go to Hard Rock, Chicago, and it's going to be a week-long trip. Of course, they're going to do the parade. And while we're in Chicago, our hotel room will be about 30 minutes outside of the city. So we won't be in the middle of downtown Chicago the whole trip. We are asking, each child has been working trying to fundraise for the trip, and each one has gotten raised about 100 a piece. Now, we've been, you've been around the school, you've heard that kids are trying to sell donuts, they're trying to sell chocolate bars. We're doing everything we can to take out to give these kids an opportunity to participate, get to go on this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Just to give you an example, one of my students the other day, we have a lot of students who come from great families, but also have students that do not. And a young lady walked up to me the other day, and I want to neighbor because I don't want to embarrass her anything, and she said, "I've got a question for you, Mr. Clay." And I said, "What's that?" And she said, "Well, you're going to think I'm stupid." And I said, "No, I really don't." She said, "Why does Ann's have a hotel in the back?" And this child is 15 years old, and she was dead serious. She has never been in a hotel. So one of the things I've done, if you don't know about me, I've been teaching for 31 years, and what I have made a career out of is taking a mess and fixing it. Every place I've ever been has been one problem after the other. And what I do is I take those programs and I build them, and I give kids opportunities that are once-in-a-lifetime. I have students who have graduated from their college in the state of Alabama, have marched in all the bands. You know, we've got kids all over the United States right now that are successful. And they'll tell you, to a person, if they hadn't been for our band programs and the way we do things, they would not be where they are today. And so I'm a true believer in dreams. I believe in making a kid's dream come true if I possibly can. You know, I, when I was down at Haden, they had five band directors in the row that had 50 kids in the program. When I left, they were marching 98, grade 10 through 12. I was over at San Rock for about nine years. Banner over there was a community fire department. They'd never had a band program before, and I built one for them, okay? So I enjoy taking a situation that's been struggling a little bit and making it work. And one of the successes, or one of the main goals, or, I should say, one of the main things that we use are trips and along with teaching, and also inspiring confidence and encouraging our kids to believe in themselves when nobody else will. And as an educator, you know, we see a lot of great kids, we see a lot of wonderful situations, but as an educator, we also see a lot of bad too. So we've got kids in our program that definitely need help, and I'm doing everything I can to do to it to take them. So I am here to ask you for some financial assistance. I'm not entirely sure what to ask for. I've never stepped in front of a town council before to ask for assistance, and I, certainly I've never been on camera, you know? I don't have a face for the camera, so, but anything you could give and our goal would be greatly appreciated. So we also are not asking for you to pay for everything. I firmly agree that the kids have to earn their way to go. That's why we're going to continue fundraising for the next three or four months to make sure that your kids handle it and they're ready to go, so.
Any questions, Kevin, concerning the trip? How many chaperones will you have to have?
We're going to take 28. And we're going to take, right now, 70 kids, we'll take 45.
But it's not just the students traveling, it's expensive for everybody.
Right. Well, with the adults, they know that they have to pay their own way. We have to use funds once it's been in school, it can all be used for the children. We can't use it for the adults, so.
We're going to have additional transportation for the students, will they travel?
They'll travel on the buses. We have two charter buses, and they'll carry everything up there.
Are all of the children that want to go regardless of money, point of view?
Yes, we'll make sure that they get to go. The ones that have chose to want to go have said that they're scared of Chicago and Rockland, so I can see that. That's why we hired a tour company to keep us from the bad places, so, you know, we're definitely not going to go to the south side of Chicago, and we're definitely not going to turn the kids loose and say, "Hey, I'll see you when you get back." That's not going to happen. So one thing about me, I'm very organized in the way that I run my band programs, almost to the point that I'm too strict when we go off on a trip. But, you know, my philosophy is always there as an educator, if one child is injured or harmed, then we all fail. So it doesn't matter if we play a single note. I'd rather kids be safe and have a good time than be that kind of thing, so.
If some women are listening, all of yous want to donate donations, how would they call that?
Well, they could write out a check and send it to the high school, any of our Hamilton High School. You know, in the past, we've also collected donations to cash out. If anybody wanted to donate to that, they could.
We thank you, Kevin. We'll try to get this on the next agenda.
Okay.
And we'll discuss it in our work session before the meeting, so we'll take this in consideration, this request, and try to act on it, okay?
All right. Thank you so much.
I don't know the amount at this moment, but we'll try to do something, guys.
Thank you so much, and appreciate it.
Now, we're honored to have our superintendent sitting with us tonight. Would you like to say a few words? Come on to the podium.
I would. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet.
And I appreciate the members of the council for just a few minutes. So I just wanted to make sure and take time to make sure you're aware of an agreement we've signed recently. Our board has signed with the Community College System of Alabama with Bevel State recently to expand our partnership with them. And so I'm just excited about it. I want to make sure that you knew and all of our other folks out in the community knew what we're doing. So Bevel State and the Board of Education have agreed that we're going to open the Marion County College and Career Academy on the campus at Bevel State. If you're aware of what's going on in Alabama these days in education, there's a huge move back to Career Tech, which I think is wonderful. There are a lot of things that are being done around the, around the state where people are building their own centers and different things. And so as I looked into that and approached Dr. Haygood, we decided that because they have space, in large part because a lot of their students are online now, they have space, they're going to share that space with us, and we're going to open our academy on their campus. We'll be moving our Career Tech programs to Hamilton over the next couple of years. Now, there'll be a transition period there as we move that, starting next fall in 2026. So we'll probably, next fall, we'll probably have four to six of our own programs that'll open up at Bevel to go with their nine or 10 programs that they have. And so our kids will be able to go there. We'll be busing kids throughout the day in different shifts, starting with 10th Friday, probably in the mornings, and they'll be coming down to Bevel and taking those classes there, as well as dual enrollment, academic dual enrollment. And so I'm really excited about that opportunity. It's going to transform our system to a large extent because we'll be having a large number of kids coming to Hamilton from across the district. But I'm so excited about it because at our, at our five high schools, the opportunities are not the same across the district. And you'll have one high school that might have one Career Tech program, and this one over here has a different Career Tech program, and this one up here, you know, Hamilton has more than everybody, but they don't have every program. And so this way, all of our kids will have access to all the programs that we can offer. And by combining programs, and we're not, we're not taking anything away, so to speak, but we're combining programs. So for example, if you had three units across the district of one program, if we convert that into one unit, then we can take the other two and create new programs. So we're really excited about that. I could talk about it all day, but I wanted you to know what we're doing and how excited I am that it's coming here into Hamilton. And you'll see, starting in the fall of '26, we think our numbers will be several hundred, and that it'll grow over the following couple of years. And you'll see a lot of kids coming into town on buses, and we think probably seniors, maybe even juniors will get to drive, and so you'll see some of that too. So I think it's great. I also think it's good because it stabilizes Bevel State and our, and our dual enrollment process with them in terms of the academic dual enrollment, earning college credit. It's really good for them, which is, I know, one reason why they're so excited to give us this opportunity. We do have a three-phase plan, and Phase Two, we do intend to build a building that they've offered us some space at Bevel State, but we're working on some, hopefully, outside resources for that. So I'm not here to ask for any money. I'm just here to tell you about great things and things we're excited about for the Marion County School System. So if you have any questions, be fine, but I just want to share that in.
Oh, that, then it part is that, is a child have to reach a certain age to get into the college academic part of this program?
So our academy will be grades 10 through 12. That's a great question. Grades 10 through 12 to do that. And so again, they'll be our exclusive dual enrollment provider for in-person students. Students will still be able to do online dual enrollment with, you know, Alabama Early College or whatever, but we, our partnership with Bevel has expanded to where it'll be those grades 10 through 12 with Bevel. So they'll earn college credit, you know, we... So they'll earn college credit, and, you know, we, we, we want our kids, like all the ones around us, these other academies, where kids are coming out with associate degrees out of high school, saving mom and dad a lot of, you know, a lot of expense, LPN status for nurses and all those kind of things, so looking forward to that. And we do think we're pretty confident that we'll be able, probably 27, 28, to have a, a performing arts center down there. They have offered us use of the Bevel Center. Um, we've got to find the right instructor for that, but there's also a career tech path that's associated with the performing arts, so, and we're just excited. I mean, it's, uh, it's really a good thing, we're looking forward to developing, so.
Thank you for coming.
Any other questions? Just wanted to get the word out. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Any of you have a question for horse this day? Thank you for that presentation. We're excited for you and, and with you because I think career tech, I think, is our future in a lot of areas. It's not everything for everybody, but it's, it's for a lot of kids that, that would really have great jobs when I was a student. Uh, so I, I, so I think it's a worthy program. Now, how did it come about, by the way? I'd like to know.
So, I'm trying not to tell that long story. I'll just say this, going back a couple of years, as I was trying to learn more about our weaknesses in terms of this, this area, um, I'll kind of fast-forward through that. Just say, I explored some grant options that other systems were doing, and I, and we didn't qualify for those. Um, I have a couple friends, superintendents, for example, one that did a one cent sales tax in the district, and that wasn't working for me, but I just didn't feel like that we had enough kids actually in these programs. And so, uh, honestly, I just reached out to Joel Haygood and said, "Hey, let's sit down and meet, I want to learn more about what you guys are doing." And, and there's a piece of this too, I would say, Mayor, again, not getting too far into the weeds, but up until this past summer, our students that went to Bevel vocational career tech programs, they could get a certificate, but they couldn't earn what they needed to actually get a diploma. Whereas our programs, they could. The state just changed that this summer so that all of their programs now will count for our kids to actually earn a diploma, which was another big plus. But I guess just to answer your question, to be honest with you, I was, I was just trying to dig out some things, and I reached out to Dr. Haygood, and, and our meeting just took off. We met in Jasper, and he was like, "Let's talk about what you need." They've done this similar type thing in terms of just the idea. The difference is, I would say this, as far as I can tell, we're kind of leading the way in doing it the way we're doing it, where we're not, not really gonna build or have our own center. We're gonna be on their space, that's unusual. Um, Walker County about to build the $80 million facility, and we're, so we're not doing that. We're partnering with the community partner we have, and I think it's better, to be honest with you, it's just great. And I think, you mentioned about the jobs. I think this will be a positive in terms of, of not just Hamilton, but all of our municipalities trying to recruit industry. Um, I think it improves our workforce over time.
That's what we've been talking about all this time.
So that's the goal for sure.
Yeah. See, somebody else put, that puts ideas out, I have to put legs on it, you're the man to put the legs on it, and I wanted to give you credit for that, for that's the reason for the question.
We got a lot of work ahead, but I appreciate it.
Thank you for all your efforts there, Superintendent. We're proud of your leadership, and thank you for hitting the ground running for us. Appreciate it very much. Chief, did you have something tonight to ask me?
Not sure, I'm just, I'm just here.
I've never seen him without something to talk about. Gentlemen, thank y'all for coming. How about, got any words?
I will tell that in addition to some of this, the, like, at least Hamilton, maybe some of the other schools have brought back, like, work programs where you can work during school hours, you don't leave like we used to have years ago. And my son was aiming to change his schedule to do that, and so when he signed up, and they said, "What do you need to sign up for? Why do you need to change your schedule?" He said, "For work release." So, so the kids are really calling it work release, I don't know if they understand.
The correct term is work-based learning, I would say. So, so I think two years ago, we, we reached an agreement with Winfield, because they had a career tech center, and, and you and Emery up through the center at Winfield could do work-based learning. But when I came in, in January, I was not happy with the fact that we had two schools that could do that, but the other three couldn't. So I made a call to the State Department, myself and Jason Gordon, we figured out how we could do it in the other three schools. So this year, we, we brought work-based learning back to Hamilton, Happy Road, and Phillips, and, and, uh, and so that's a part of this process as well.
Thanks for the comments there. Angela?
No, sir.
What's the date of your next election?
September the 23rd.
September 23rd will be the runoff in the Hamilton municipal election. Everybody get out to the polls, and thank you all for coming tonight. Uh, if we have no other business, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll be glad to make that motion.
Scott Tower made the motion, Scott Robinson said it. All in favor of that adjournment? Appreciate y'all coming out tonight. Take it well.
Hello, I'm Keith Nichols with Marion County Funeral Home. I'm here with our manager, Glenda Cochran, and owners Rick and Jane Chambliss. It has always been our purpose to provide the most caring and compassionate service we can at the most reasonable prices. So we feel it imperative to offer a pre-need option that will fit the needs of the people and area we serve. So why should we pre-plan? To make sure your wishes are met, provide peace of mind for you and your family, to relieve hurried and impulsive decisions at one of the most difficult times in our lives, to also relieve a great financial burden on our family. We plan for a number of things in our lives, so let's not forget one of the most important, our final arrangements. For a limited time, we're offering your choice of a $6,495 service or a $6,995 service. We're here because we care, so give us the opportunity to sit down and answer any questions you might have regarding pre-planning and the services we provide at Marion County Funeral Home in Hamilton, 921-5777, and follow us on Facebook.
From a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Body is here for you. Owners Kim Guin would like to say thank you for your business.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Guin to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at 205-921-6712.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you. With five locations serving seven counties, you don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.